You're watching CHCO TV's gavel to gavel coverage of the January 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting for the Municipal District of St. Stephen. I'm Florence Mitchell. In today's meeting, under new business, the 2024 budget implementation will be discussed, including enhanced by law enforcement. Committee will also discuss a facilitated council strategy session. Finally, committee will discuss the Communities in Bloom project. Now let's join committee in the Moosehead Room at the Garcelin Civic Center in St. Stephen.
Okay. Welcome everyone to Municipal Districts of St. Stephen Committee of the Whole Meeting, Wednesday, January 17, 2024, at 6:00 PM. Everyone's here. Before we begin, I would like to respectfully acknowledge that we are gathered today on ancestral unceded territory, the Pasunumakati Peoples. Before we get going, I'd have a mover and a secondor for the agenda of the Committee of the Whole Meeting, January 17, 2024, be approved, please. Deputy Mayor Wheaton, Councilor Cornish. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion approved. Any conflicts of interest this evening? Seeing none. Okay. Committee of the Whole Meeting, proposed resolutions. Need mover and a secondor for the minutes of the committee meeting of the whole held on November 8, 2023, be approved as presented. Councilor Eastman, Councilor Harding. Any questions on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you. And a mover and a secondor for the Committee of the Whole Meeting, the minutes of the special committee of the whole meeting held on November 15, 2023, be approved as presented. Councilor Wright?
Second.
Councilor Eastman. Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Okay. Got new business council availability for the next committee meeting of the whole on February 14, 2024. That's probably something to discuss, okay?
May I, Your Worship? Okay. The executive assistant and I have been working on a calendar for this year for all of our meetings. And there's a few conflicts with holidays and things that we're gonna have to adjust and some recommendations we'll bring forward to council during their meeting dates. However, we did flag that the next meeting of this committee is scheduled for February 14, which is certainly observed by some, not all, not a stat holiday, but just wanted to bring that to your attention. And if the committee wanted to reschedule, we could work with you to find another date. But if you're good to proceed, that's fine too. I don't, just didn't want to create any home front issues for anybody, so wanted to just highlight it for you and get direction how you'd like to proceed.
Okay, any discussion? Council, thoughts? Council Wright?
I would just say that it's not only council that we have to consider, it's the staff that has to be here supporting staff. So out of respect for our staff, I would be comfortable moving it to another night as well.
Anyone else?
I agree.
We got three agrees. Okay. So now we need a date. Do you want to back up a week? Or do you want to go one day, one another, one way or another?
If it's okay with the committee members, maybe we'll just send an email around with a few, couple of proposed dates. As you say, it's staffing when we get off our normal schedule and our friends at CHCO and things, it'd be nice to be able to coordinate that a little bit, but we can do that by email. And as soon as we have a date, we'll post it to our website so that the public is aware as well.
Okay. All right. You don't need to vote on that.
No, I don't need that direction, thank you.
All right, next up is the 2024 Budget Implementation Enhanced by Law Enforcement. Floor's yours, Jeff.
Thank you, Your Worship. You'll recall, as we approved budget, we did put some extra money in for an enhancement to the bylaw services. We are, administration is seeking a little, a dialogue and direction around what you would like that to look like. There's a few options obviously on the table. We could bring in a second person potentially on a part-time basis. We could take their current person who's part-time, move them to full-time. Or if there's any specific areas that you would like those funds to be focused on, so that we can create a plan for implementation, so that we can get this moving as quickly as possible. We know it was an important issue for the public and for you folks when we did budget deliberation, and we don't want to leave it until late in the year to get it going. So just looking for some dialogue and some direction around what we may, what you might like to see with those funds.
Any comments from council? Council Eastman?
Do we have a job description we could take a look at?
I'd be happy to share one, yes. Our current, obviously our current one is a contracted position, it's a little different, but it would be easy enough to provide at least a draft one for your review, for sure.
Council Islet?
Do you have any initial indications of the financial ramifications for full-time and to part-time? Is it, is there any issues there with as far as financially?
No, if we did talk to our current service provider about extending his hours, he seemed open to that concept, based on his current rate structures and things. So it would be, and we've already budgeted for these enhancements. So as far as financially, it's just a matter of how do we want to spend the money? And it won't be much difference if we do part-time, we'll curtail that contract to the funding that's available. But yeah, we're not committed to either approach really, just looking for, want to deliver what you're looking for.
Council Otis?
So just as a new counselor, the person that's contracted out currently, are they independent? They have their own business? And then we oversee based on kind of our job description for them? And then second question would be, do you think for longevity purposes, it might be good to bring a second person on so that they can kind of train under this person and see what the job is like? Because I know there's a lot to bylaw enforcement, so just thinking it might not be a bad idea for a second person to be on board, that we could kind of look at sustainable practice for the future.
Yeah, I mean, we kind of touched on that too, because we can overlap shifts too as well. But anyways, there's a lot of other options there. Any more council dialogue? Oh, geez.
Yeah, just same thing with the two, it's flexibility, right? And probably efficiency with the two rather than the one. So I would like to see that. Yeah.
Council Harding?
Thank you. Well, since I wasn't here for any of the budget preparations, where does that stand now? Where, I know that we have Brent, is he still like 20 or 30 hours a week? Or what's the story there?
Yeah, so our current service provider is at 20 hours per week. Council has budgeted sufficient funds to essentially double that service to 40 hours. Now whether that's with our current service provider or a combination of our current service provider and another person, whether they're employed directly with us instead of as the contractor, I mean, there are scenarios there that work. And as some members of the committee have mentioned, there are certainly some benefits to that. And we know, well, we know that our current service provider is, you know, maybe not, won't be here for eons as they're considering their options moving forward. There will be a potential change in probably, possibly within the term of this council still, in that person. So it's, there is a succession planning type scenario there that should be considered. The other options that are out there, of course, is the RSC does provide that service as well as a contracted service, which, I mean, like everything has its pros and cons to it, I think, right now. So we do have some options there, but we want to make sure, I mean, that would be a little bit longer term, I think, but in the short term, just trying to figure out how the best to, and the other part of it, I think, part of the thing that might guide which way we might recommend you go at a future meeting is if there are specific priorities that you see that you would like specifically addressed by this enhanced money, rather than do more of what you're currently doing, which is an option. It may be do what you're doing currently, but we also want somebody or more focus on these types of things. And then if we've got two things going, it might be that we have one officer that's in charge of mainly heading up one, spearheading one angle, and another officer who's specializing and each being able to do each other's, but each having some specialties as well.
I've been getting calls lately, and I don't know if this falls under the bylaw enforcement or not, but I've been getting calls from a certain gentleman about people removing his stakes. He is a, you know, when the surveyor puts them in the ground, people are removing them. I have checked, and I've checked with Alex, and he sent me some information and says that that's definitely against the law. You can't do that. You can't cut up or take up people's stakes. Do you know anything about that? Okay, well, I said the same thing, but I mean, he calls all the time. I'd like to have an answer for him.
Yeah, it wouldn't be, that wouldn't be municipal bylaw, that would be provincial law, that you can't remove survey stakes. But, but yeah, we can, happy to assist this individual as any way I can, but that wouldn't, no matter what we did with our bylaw officer, that unfortunately wouldn't help with that particular situation.
Council Cornish?
Just to clarify maybe on the word part about survey stake is a wooden stake, survey pin is an iron, so which one are we, are we throwing away wooden pins or are we throwing away actual survey pins?
Actual survey.
Okay, thank you.
Council Otis?
I think it would be best to have the current service provider stay at 20 hours and then bring the second person in through the RSC, because it might actually create a better line of communication with us in the RSC. If they're contracted out through the RSC, then they can also come back and communicate some of the municipal struggles that they're seeing. And I know that they also have kind of like a community safety type or regional safety committee, so that might just create, you know, and then that's perhaps a staff that we can inform what the needs are, but one less staff to technically oversee, correct? I don't know, I just think that that's probably the easiest route to go. That's not going to really increase any stress on staff overseeing a brand-new person, and that will be the RSC's job to oversee that person that we're contracting out through them, if that's correct?
I would have to confirm with the RSC whether one can choose to be partially into their program or not, much like their planning, their planning services that we do use, it's you're in or you're out kind of thing. And it wouldn't be like, oh, we only want you part-time doing this, I suspect. So I don't think that would be an option quite the way we're looking at it, but a lot of your points are valid. I just don't think contractually, that's how they're set up.
Okay. So have you got enough from us to build something and bring it back? Any pretty good idea, are we looking at, it looks like two?
Yeah, I were just conferring with my colleague and it seems like there's an interest in a second person, a second individual out in the community, which is fully understandable. And whether it's tonight or when we bring that proposal forward, it would still be good to know about the focus of attention, right? Because it is two different, two kind of different scenarios. If we did look for a second person, we might look for a different person depending on what the goal, what the primary goals are. So up to the committee whether they want to defer that conversation until they see a little bit more around the concept of two, or help guide us towards that proposal, either way.
One sec. Council Wright?
Thank you. I'd be comfortable deferring it, just not for long, but just for a little bit of what that might look like, because we have another bylaw that we're supposed to be working on ASAP about properties, and what comes out of that bylaw might affect what we want, where we want focus. So.
Council Cornish?
Just a quick question, going back a few years, we had a bylaw enforcement officer, I believe here, that was the title, and I remember them going around looking at houses and the ANA in them or whatever. Is that job description still available?
In my time here, we've only used the contracted, the contracted service, but if there's one in the files, I'm sure that our staff could dig up, yeah, and take a look at it for sure.
I think, are you maybe thinking about bylaws or home inspections? Okay, all right. All right. So back to that, so you got a good grasp on what you're looking for here? Okay, all right. All right. Okay, next up is facilitated council strategic session. CAO has received an inquiry to bring in a facilitator. Well, yes, I know we talked about it, but go ahead, Jeff.
Sure. So a member of council reached out to me and inquired about possibly bringing in a facilitator to do another session, like such as a Gordon McIntosh that we've done before, which, you know, and they inquire whether there'd be money in the budget. And if it was a desire of the council and the committee to go down that road for a particular purpose, we certainly can identify funds for you that could be used. The question that I had was kind of twofold. If this was something that was of interest to the whole to do, and probably just as important for me, is what would be the objectives of that facilitated session? Because if it is Gordon, Mr. McIntosh, he has five or six different sessions, and he'll ask me which one, what am I delivering before he gives me a quote? And if it's not something quite within his forte, I do know a number of other facilitators that specialize in different areas. So if we had a conversation about whether that was of interest and what the goals might be, I can better come back to you with some information as to costing and availability of facilitators, if that's the desire of the whole.
Okay, so what we're looking for is interest. Council Harding? No?
Back, because I think he has got a very.
Around the room here, Wade or Councilor Green?
Focused on something, are we going to do an update on our strategic plan? Are we going to do some team building leadership or something like that? Like, so if we know what it's going to be, then, then fine. But, you know, I don't really want to approve anything unless we know which way we're going. So I'd say table this until we have some time to think about it. And what, you know, maybe you could provide us with what, with what options, you know, that he offers, like what, you know, what programs he offers, just to see, right? Yeah.
I was kind of going along with what Wade says is until, like, without just saying, do we want a facilitated session? I'd be like, no. But if we said, do we want a session about X, I might say yes. So just to say, do we want a facilitated session? I'm not comfortable saying yes right now.
I'm the same as Council Wright.
Yeah, I agree with Council Wright and the other counselors. We put that strategic plan together somewhere, April last year, if I recall, and we didn't start working on it till probably April or May. I still think we have a lot of room yet to work on that strategic plan. If we're going to have one, I'd rather see it go till next year, so we clean up what we already have. That's my input.
I would say that I'm the same. I think we need a focus point for sure, but frankly, I think our budget is pretty strapped, and I'm not really interested in sitting down and just strategizing. And I think we know each other well enough to know what our strategic priorities are and how we probably can work together on coming together towards those. So I don't know that we need, I think, at that time, we didn't really know what it was like to be a counselor. We didn't know each other. It was, we were recently amalgamated, it was all brand-new, so I think it was just a different time. Not that I'm opposed to it later down the line, if we can figure out a focus point, but...
Yeah, when I seen this on the agenda, I was kind of surprised, because, I mean, we just went through this not very long ago. It hasn't even been a year yet that we've done our strategic plan, so I don't think at this point that it would warrant the funds being spent. But if there's something like, as Joey said, or Council Wright said, if there's something that, you know, that we need some focus on, then maybe, but right now, off the top of my head, no, I wouldn't support it.
I'm wondering if we could look at the plan that we have, because I know that when we did it, both times that I did it, he said, you know, like our priorities are such right now, but, you know, a few months down the road, they do change. And I think it would be worth looking at what we have, but whether we need somebody to do it with us, I don't think that might not be necessary. But I think it might be a good idea to look at what we have and see what we need to move up or down.
Yeah, certainly if the intent is just a strategic plan update and refresher, I mean, I'm happy to help facilitate that discussion with you. You know, I've worked with Gordon a long time, I can probably steal a lot of his, view his tricks along the way too, but I just didn't know if it was something different, whether that was, you know, off into the roles and responsibilities side, or, you know, dealing with difficult conversations, or like, there's lots of areas where people can find learnings, and I just didn't have enough sense of what was possible. So I'm still happy to put together a list of, you know, things that are out there, whether it's Mr. McIntosh or some others, that may be of interest down the road, not a problem. Like, we can share that with you guys, to help kind of wrap your head around what might, and if it's for 2025's budget, then so be it, but at least then you'll have a sense of what's out there. That works for me.
I'm actually also not opposed to just a quick update for the community on committee of the whole of where we're at with our strategic planning and kind of the things that we've accomplished, because I know that as council, we've kind of reviewed it informally, you know, and I know at the end of the year, Councilor Green lost an email and said, here are all the things we've actually accomplished this year. So I think sometimes we get lost in the busyness of council, but it would be great for you to just present, like, these are some really big highlights that staff have accomplished, and here are some things that as council, you have accomplished. And it's not a bad idea to kind of show that to the community so that they're well-informed too.
Sounds like we can, are we talking like a weekend thing, or come in here on Saturday, so to speak, or what are you thinking?
At this point, I think Council Otis has a great idea there of doing a status update just at a committee of the whole meeting. We can put that report together fairly quickly, because to a large extent, a lot of that data was also in CAO performance evaluation packages that you guys got a little while ago. So we can update that material and prepare it for public consumption, that's a great idea. I think once we do that, we can decide, you can decide how you would like to do that refresher and update, whether that's, like I said, asking me to facilitate a discussion in an evening or whatever, but we can, if we do the update for the status report first, and then we can make a game plan at the next council, next committee of the whole meeting, maybe.
Okay, next up, Communities in Bloom.
Yeah, it's a, well, it was a similar vein to the last point, is I know that we had an inquiry from a member of council about communities in bloom and if it's something which we could do. So what I wanted to do was share kind of some of the material I received from Saskatchewan in my former community. When I worked there, that community was one of 1,500, we competed twice. And give you some of my observations of that time and, you know, how I would do differently if I was going again. So as you'll see from your package, the, it's a kind of two-page flyer that is sent out to the Saskatchewan communities, I'm unsure of the content, I presume it's very similar to that in New Brunswick. The six main areas for judging are listed there, community appearance, environmental action, heritage conservation, tree management, landscape, and plant and floral displays. So it's not just the floral displays that you usually would associate with communities in bloom, there's a lot of work, and it's explained in there. My observations is it needs lots of assistance, not just staff, volunteers really do help promote the community, because it's more of a, an overall view on how our community would be represented. You know, it's residential, it's commercial, it's municipal buildings as well. There is, you know, looking into our infrastructure, garbage, and recycling initiatives as well. So it really is a mixed bag. There is expense that comes with this, because you have to pay for the judges to come in, you're there for, here for so long. What we ended up doing in my communities, we had these subcommittees, there was five or six volunteers that assisted. I mean, I didn't have the team that I do now, but there was still a need for volunteers, and we put together a 120-page brochure for the judges to do, and they're in June, July, you know, when it's a busiest time. There is, yeah, a lot of demand, but if you are successful, you can go on to represent Canada, you compete nationally, and then you can go on to represent Canada if you are interested. So it's certainly something for discussion, and, you know, our objective is similar to the last one, you know, what do we want to get out of this? Because if we don't get monetary rewards, it's more bragging rights and the prestige of having it. So that's a quick little insight into communities in bloom from me, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's back in, quite a while ago, Council Harding was with us, just the two of us, I think, and then, yeah, that they did that. And I remember we had the tour of the judges around, and we did have to put them up in his place, I do remember that. And yeah, I think you get some advertising for your community in the magazine and that kind of thing too. And it'll boost some spirit, and, you know, I think we do a pretty good job with our flower arrangements in our community anyway, so, but it might give them a chance to show that off if staff is up to it too. Like, you know, do you think we can handle that? Did I hear you say, you know, something else is going on in that same timeframe?
I'm not sure. Events-wise, you know, we would, it would need a good strategy and how we'd approach this. I know our horticulturist and her team of students are busy from May to end of July, when everything's growing. It would be great if there was some events as well. Of course, we have our festivals in July and August, so not ideal if we were going to bring those staff members in. If there was volunteers from council that would want to, you know, figure out one of the six topics, that would, you know, be a good thing as well. We'd have to look, I don't think we could do it this year, because as we said, you know, about the budget, but it's certainly something which we can look for 2025 and maybe make a presentation then.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea. I know the BIA was interested in partnering on this, and there might be some good avenues for funding, but it'd be nice to plan a little further ahead and get the funding in place, because we're talking tens of thousands of dollars here, I'm sure, as far as, you know, and we don't want that to come out of the regular budget, we want that to be additional monies and stuff. But if we did, you know, get further down the line, it's probably a lot of recognition for the town, so, and free advertising. Thank you.
Council Harding?
Thank you, Worship. Yeah, we went through this in 2012, 2013, and I just think it would be an uplifting thing for the town, there's so much negativity. I'm not saying it's not warranted, but there was a lot of negativity, and I think this would be a real, you know, a real boost to the town. I really do, because it was before, and I think it could be again. I would certainly be wanting to volunteer in that. And I don't do much volunteering, but that I would do. So thank you, Worship.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
I don't know if I remember correctly, but I think I've seen this advertised before, and it was also, you could go...
and it was also you could go on Zoom calls and just get more information on it. So I think, like, I'm all in favor, but I think it would be nice to know what you're getting into. And also, there are people in the community that were deeply involved, and as a matter of fact, just less than a month ago, I was speaking to somebody that was involved in the last one, and they even went to Ottawa, I believe. So she thought it was the most wonderful trip, and, you know, we could actually solicit these people, hate to, to give you a hand with that.
So I'm seeing that we're not trying for this year, but next? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Okay? All right, thank you, counsel. That brings us to an end, to the open meeting. All right, I need a mover and secondor. As pursuant to section sixty-eight, bracket one, the local government's at, the council moved to closed session for the purpose of discussing one financial matter and one employment matter. Counselor Harding, Counselor Cornish, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.